Good evening. We call to order the regular meeting of West Valley City Council. We know that all council members are present this evening. And we'll begin with an opening ceremony. And Councilman Steve Buehler is on my list as the one who will present it tonight.
Thank you, Mayor, and welcome everybody and everybody watching at home. We hope. It's now May, and because it's May, I wanted to open this meeting showing a movie clip from a movie that is now suddenly 20 years old. So Mr. Esley, if you could go ahead and show that, please. Let me set it a little bit. This is a World War II veteran returning to Normandy with his family. Later this month, we'll be celebrating Memorial Day. And I wanted to remember that. And Memorial Day is an exciting, fun day, but it isn't just the first picnic, the first camp out, or the first boating day of the year. It means, and should mean, and we should remember that it means a great deal more than that, and be grateful to those who have made it a day to be remembered and provided our freedoms for us and all of these other good things that we enjoy so casually. And with that, I'll conclude. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Approval of our minutes of April 23rd. Need a motion?
Motion approved the minutes of April 23rd, 2019.
Thank you. Same old discussion, all in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Passage in and out, please, the master. Next, we have our Employee of the Month award. Amy Cottoman from the Police Department will turn to Councilmember Doris North.
Thank you, Mayor. Amy, will you please stand so we can know who we're talking about here? Thanks, Amy. Amy Cottoman has been the longest standing member of the Evidence Division. She consistently goes above and beyond her duties and is always problem-solving issues, including managing the lack of space in the Evidence Office. She keeps everyone updated on new laws and procedures as she learns of them. She has also recently been key in advising detectives of closed cases where further investigation was needed on critical cases. Amy does a lot of the adjudication of cases. When a property item booked into Evidence has expired its review date, Amy will begin the process of reviewing the items of Evidence and the case. She will then look into the court disposition of the case, which often requires checking various websites. In this process, she has come across cases that had previously been closed but were suspicious. One particular case was closed as a suicide. The case turned out to be a homicide that was successfully reopened and investigated. Amy's high work ethic is what drives her to share these types of insights with the appropriate detective and make sure nothing slips by. Amy's hard work often goes unrecognized as a resident of the basement in City Hall, but her contribution to the city is undeniable. Please join with me in congratulating Amy Cottoman as our Employee of the Month.
Start over here, both shake your hand. I have a few things for you. Just taking this anywhere? You have your certificate. There's something to give, both big plus thanks for that. Thank you. Let's have you go up to the front.
That is good job.
This is a great tradition that the city has with this Employee of the Month, to hear so many stories, the work that employees do that is typically unknown, sometimes even almost unnoticed. But we find that there is great work that goes on on a regular basis, and these help to highlight that. And so to Amy and to all of those who work with her, thank you, and to all the others of our city employees, many of them have great stories to share, so I'm glad that we do this. With that, then, you're welcome to stay the whole meeting. Not everyone does, but we invite anyone that would like that. So, and you can take pictures out in the hall and talk while we go on with our regular items here. Next is our commentary. And we have three people who have signed up, and there may be some who haven't been here before, I'm not sure. Jim, Owen, and Bill. And we just remind you, it's your five minutes, up to five minutes, not more than five minutes. And that it's not an interactive thing, it's not a discussion, a debate, or anything like that. Just address your comments to me as the mayor, and we'll go from there. So with that, Jim, you were first on the list.
Good evening. Mr. Vissok. Yes, the first thing is I put in a grammar request on numbers from code enforcement. To my surprise, not to my surprise, most of it was denied. A lot of the information I was requesting is budget information, numbers. I know it's available, there's been references made in the study meetings by staff to some of the numbers. I went through, I sent an email to council today with a copy of it, and you know, what I was looking for, I'm not going to really go into great detail, these guys all got the email on that. What got me on code enforcement was the Robertson case. I've been privy to all the information that he has gotten in this case, and even took other steps. For instance, when the city manager two weeks ago drove down the street, took pictures, one of the pictures that he took was of the Robertson rental property with the ruts in it. I immediately notified Robertson that night. Within a week, it is fixed with rocks, just like a responsible citizen would do. This goes to the backing of his case. When he's notified, he takes care of the issue. In his case, we'll go to the April 10th incident, he was sent an email letter that said he was granted a hearing on his requests for violations. I know Mrs. Robertson has sent you guys all this, but I was at that hearing, Lay Morris wasn't a judge in there, he refused to hear that part of it because there was also a second letter sent out that it was for the abatement cost, and that's all that he would hear. Once again, was Robertson wrong on having his stuff on property of a residential? Yes. Has the city done anything wrong in this case? Absolutely. City cannot prove that any letters were sent out. When Mr. Robertson was first notified was the abatement date. Of course, he's excited. I would be excited too if somebody was coming and taking all my property and I didn't know. Since then, any issues that he, he took care of everything immediately, and since then, anything that's come up, he's taken care of, which once again waves towards his side of the issue. There's got to be something, he has not got his fair date in court with proper notification. This goes back to notification. I've talked to several code enforcement officers, they don't know who they're talking to, but and asked them questions. There's a lot of them that will take the notice to the door, but even before then, they try and make contact with the property owner if they can, before they even write a citation and say, hey, this is the issue. You know, can we get this fixed without doing a formal violation? And if they can't make a face-to-face contact, they take their card to the door that says, contact me. With the notification, I know there's resistance about certified letters and all that, but that is proof of notification. But even easier is, there are several jurisdictions, they do this, take the violation on the door. Code enforcement has cameras, take a picture, that picture is dated, that's also proof of delivery. I know Utah, mailing, even in the state level, there's an ordinance, because I did look it up, because I've talked to council, I have attorneys in California and Idaho, they said, well, that would never fly. But I thought, well, I better look at Utah, look, it seems to be different. And it does. Mailing, at the presumption, or the assumption, in this case, that they've got it. We all know how the mail is messed up. Another incident, the Robertson case, he corrected his addresses on March 11th. His April 11th notification went to the wrong address, it went to the property address. He went in and did what he was supposed to do, when he found out, and it still went to the wrong address. Whose fault is that, the city or the county reporter? Once again, in his case, because I'm familiar with it, there's a lot of fishy stuff going on, and code enforcement and higher-ups seem to be circling their wagons. Staff talked about the previous officer wasn't doing their job and stuff like that. It kind of makes you wonder, you know, what are they hiding, like I said, and you know, the reason why they don't want to do anything is it's such a cask out of the city, you know, bringing in all this money. You ought to sit in some of those hearings and the judgments and see the numbers that are coming out. It's my time, thanks.
Thank you. Next, we have a, I think it's Owen Cherian?
Sharpier.
Okay, Sharpier.
Yes, it's a French name. I'm here to talk about code enforcement, also city ordinance. It's 7-7-115, paragraph 2. It talks about parking utility vehicles or vehicles of such in a residential area. It says tow truck, tractor, chemical trucks, all these other trucks, box trucks and all the stuffs that cannot be stored in a personal, in a personal property. I'd like to have the city revisit the fact that it says tow truck. The problem is, if we put a tow truck in there and we say a tow truck can't be parked in a residential area, we eliminate response time. Response time to A, gets officers back on the road after an accident, after we clean up an accident scene. B, gets families off of a highway safely when they're stranded on a highway, cars are going by at 70 miles an hour that refuse to pull over for a vehicle with emergency situation. The code says store. I'd like to put a quick emphasis on the word store. I have a tow truck, it's 2019, I bought it in January, I've driven it 24,399 miles since January. That truck is never stored. It almost runs 15 hours a day. I tell my wife when I go home at night, I'm going to take off my boots and reboot my computer for about six hours, so I can go back and help more people that are stranded and in danger. I'd also like to comment that I run a certified tow company, I go through all the channels to make sure that my company is running properly. I purposely got a property that would contain my entire tow truck on my property, not block a fire lane, not block a thruway, not have any problems of such. Previously, I was a ordinance enforcement officer for West Valley City, a police officer for many years in the state of Utah, including Summit County, and I now own a tow company. In my opinion, I'm still a first responder. I think I help more people now than I ever helped in those positions. Another thing that I'd like to emphasize is that no work is done from your home when you own a tow truck. Every one of my neighbors has a vehicle in their garage or driveway or whatever that they use to get to and from work. The tow truck is my vehicle to get to and from work, and if I park it in an area that's an approved storage area or whatever, takes me 15 minutes to get to it, and then 10 minutes to respond to the call, then I immediately impact my revenue source. Because many of my contracts say that I respond within 15 minutes. And if I can't, they just give it to the next provider, the guy that does park it at home and the guy that's able to respond within 15 minutes. And just the fact that towing is a necessary evil for everyone in society. Of all of the cars that we have, whether they're electric, gas, containers, boats, whatever, we have needs to move them, and we should do it effectively, efficiently, and rapidly. It helps protect everyone to move these things out of the way quickly when they're broke down in the way. That's all I have to say. I'd just like to have it revisited so that tow truck can be removed from that in accordance with people being responsible. I know some people want to tow a bunch of junk home, and their yard looks like a wrecking yard. Mine does not. I have a beautiful new home with plenty of space to park in, and there should be no issue with a tow truck being in a neighborhood if it's responsible. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Bill.
Angus.
Angus.
Just like you, pal.
Okay, I'm back on my code enforcement, and I have to agree with the previous speaker. It's, I look at code enforcement as kind of a necessary evil. There's definitely two sides to that question. If you'd like to look at the pictures, the top picture is the offending vehicle that was parked in front of my neighbor's house for quite some time, easy to remove at any point. The lower picture is the police cars lined up on my street the day of the abatement. I spoke that day about, to some of the code enforcement people, and I told them that's the worst thing that's happened on my street in 44-plus years. I told them also at that time, I was not aware of the history of the problems. They said there was a lengthy and extensive history. On the next page, there's a black line, shows the history, the things that went on before, above the black line were when the house was a rental. All of the ones below that line are when my friend Potlow moved into there. He moved in on 4/10/2010. Since then, there have been no neighbor complaints. There were some early minor complaints, 2014, 16, 18, and then in 2018, the inoperable vehicle, the truck that you see. Also, at that time, there was a surfacing problem. He has a lot of traffic in and out of his yard, he has a big family, and people drove over his lawn at the ends of the driveway, and the enforcement officer said, well, you've got tire tracks on your lawn, you can't have that, you need to put gravel in there. So Pablo went out and got pea gravel, which is readily available in December, and put it there, and the enforcement officer came back and said, that's not good enough. So even though he had tried, he didn't feel good enough. So in December, it's really hard to get access to good gravel or concrete. He's dug out that area now and is waiting until he can afford to get the concrete. There's also on the next page, the enforcement officer spoke to members of his family. He didn't talk with Potlow, and his family tried to convey the intent of what the officer was saying, and Potlow didn't understand. It's difficult dealing with code enforcement, because you don't really think that what they're saying is as significant as it is, because I have a personal experience with that. But anyway, let's see, grab that. There is a difficulty to communicate. I asked Pablo, I says, what could the officer have done? He said, I wish he would have had a business card with his name, his phone number, and a date. And he says, if I would have had that, he says, I would have responded. But he didn't have anything like that. So, and Pablo didn't really understand that he was supposed to call, and I still don't see why code enforcement can't follow up and check the property without going to an abatement. The abatement cost Pablo $1,000 plus. I have, the last page is what it cost him. Okay, now, real quick, we've got to look at the house. 29 seconds, okay. New roof, solar, that since he moved in, the portico, the porch is all new, all the plants are new, trees, et cetera. In addition, he took out two big ugly junipers. This house has the best curb appeal of anywhere in my neighborhood, and I don't mean just my street, I mean in my neighborhood. It's the nicest house. I used to have the nicest house. Okay, good, done.
Okay, thank you. Was there anyone else here for public comment? Seeing no one else, Mr. Pile, any comments?
Yes, sir, I think I'll take a few minutes tonight to speak. And first, I need to make a clarification for the rest of the council who didn't hear the conversation in the study meeting after it concluded. I was speaking with Ms. Lang about a case that we're all familiar with, Mr. Vissok has spoken to, and I made an error on my own information part. I had made mention that the hearing officer, Mr. Morris, wasn't the officer in a concerned case, any hearing. I was mistaken, mixed up my own memory, and was thinking of a whole different case aside. So just as Mr. Vissok said on this date and question, Mr. Morris was indeed the hearing officer. So I wanted to clear that up and make sure everybody heard that, and that would be on the record. The rest of my commentary really is basically more generally to this whole question of code enforcement and notification and commentary or statements Mr. Vissok has made about the various processes, processes, questions, and conversations we've had about Mr., or the one gentleman who he makes comments on behalf of in his property in the code enforcement process. Words have been used such as lying, fishy, circling the wagons, as if there's some sort of a conspiracy going on to pick on a particular citizen or whatever in this process, which there is not. Mr. Vissok may claim to some grammar requests that he didn't feel had been fulfilled particularly. I myself had reviewed that grammar request. It contained a page plus of various requests for information, some of which were pretty easily filled. There were some job descriptions on there for incidents, which I believe he got. A lot of these instances, as he referred to, were numbers, but they were not records. He was really, in many cases in this grammar request, requesting research, not records. Grammar law does not require us, nor would it be viable for us to do research on behalf of citizens who are trying to figure out something, whether that applies to a code enforcement case that they're not directly involved with, or trying to start business, or whatever the issue might be. Government, in terms of grammar law, the reason I'm making this, this commentary is for the greater understanding by the public who might be listening in. Grammar requests are for specific documents and specific information requests about records that exist. They're not a venue for either residents, business owners, other concerned citizens, journalists, or whoever who want us to do research work for them and produce records as opposed to, and create records as opposed to simply provide copies of records that already exist. So I wanted to make sure everybody understood what the situation, the difference was there. In the end, and I actually didn't see what the exact number of records on that request were returned Mr. Vissok, but it actually was more than I thought would be actually produced, given the seeming research request nature of that grammar request. And that's important to understand too, because if we do And that's important to understand too, because if we do get a grammar request in which it might be easily interpreted that we could come up with a particular piece of information, we have no problem with providing that and would if it was simple. Now, on the other hand, something that often happens in grammar requests is somebody might make, or a party might make a request for a single or a long list of records, which does also include significant copying cost, time to go pull that, all those sorts of things. You had some discussion about that in the item earlier when we were talking about the grammar software, which might make that task easier, for example. In those cases, we are allowed and we should, in my opinion, lots of times, charge people who are making those grammar requests for that time as simply good responsiveness and responsibility to the other taxpayers of the city as well. We don't often do that, but when we do do that, usually what happens then is the person who makes that grammar request refuses, basically is replying in a sense of, "No, I don't want to pay for that, so no thanks, don't produce the records for me." So another piece of information that accrues to that. Back to the other piece in terms of the code enforcement program. I guess my only comment really is, across time, in the eleven years that we have been running this process in the way that we have, the record of the code enforcement, whole process in terms of cleanliness for the city, process fairness, opportunities for residents, citizens, business owners, and whoever respond speaks for itself. And I can stand pretty much on that. In this particular case, we have a gentleman who feels like he was unfairly treated or didn't get proper hearing or notice. That is his certainly right to opinion. We don't agree with that from a staff standpoint. We have provided you as a council with information that we believe counters his position. But again, I'm not making that point here to argue the point with either the person who's actually directed, directly connected to that case, or the person who comes and makes comments about the other person's case. And to say that from a restatement standpoint for anybody in the public who might be listening, you as a council might have questions, that our code enforcement process is by far, frankly, I'll just say it, the best in the state. It's the most effective, it's the most efficient, it gets the best results, and it does it in a completely fair manner. One last point I also wanted to make. There's no cash cow involved here with our code enforcement effort. On an annual basis for collection of actually fines that were referred to, we might see a few thousand dollars. The costs that are expended in code enforcement in terms of running that run literally in the hundreds of thousands of dollars in terms of staffing and equipment and those sorts of things. There is no financial incentive for the city to pursue code enforcement, as the one gentleman said, "This is a necessary evil. This is a choice we make." Nobody likes going to anybody's property and telling them, "Hey, we don't approve of how your property looks. We have to do it by process, we have to do it by ordinance, we have to do it by very specific criteria and standard." And that is the only way to do it in which anybody can be assured a relative level of fairness. Thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone on the council? Councilman Christensen?
Just a couple of points. One to follow up on the opening ceremony. You forgot to mention, Mr. Buehler, that Victory in Europe Day is celebrated tomorrow. So seeing Normandy where the Victory in Europe started was very apropos tonight. There aren't many of us, well, I can't even remember it because I wasn't born at Victory in Europe Day either, but there aren't many people left that can remember that. And so we need to remember that. We were talking earlier about nine-eleven and many of our kids don't remember what happened on nine-eleven. So think about that when you go home tonight and talk to your kids. That was only eighteen years ago, but a lot of kids have grown up since that time and don't really remember it. And secondly, I was very pleased to see justice take over yesterday and the culmination of one of our cases, culmination that happened, pleased for the justice system we have in the United States. Thank you.
Anyone else? Counsel, I would suggest then that the issue of the tow truck in residential area be put on our agenda in study meeting next week and have a discussion on that.
Agreed.
All right. Then on to Resolution nineteen dash forty-three, adopting a tentative budget for our fiscal year starting July first and then ending, of course, next year on the June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty. And then included in that is setting August thirteenth of this year as the public hearing date for our final adoption. And so for those who are interested, of course, our budget is put out there for people to review. I don't know that I need to add a whole lot of comments fairly. In truth, most of our budget is fairly routine. It's the same as last year, essentially. You know, our police department's still there, we still pay our officers, we still budget for that as well as all the other activities of the city. But that's kind of an example to highlight. So most of the budget is still, is just a continuation of what we've been doing all along. We do have some program mods that we're discussing, possible additional funding, but we'll evaluate those over the next little while and by uncertainly at our August thirteenth, not thirteenth yet, meeting that we will have that decided and included in our budget by that date, along with anything else that might be added to that. We probably spent ninety-five percent of our budget discussion on five percent of our budget. That's true. In fact, Mr. Pile, I didn't even open it up, but it seems to me you said what was our budget for operating budget was about eighty-five, ninety million?
It's around eighty-two million dollars excluding one-time expenses.
Yeah. And then we do have the funds.
Oh, unreserved funds?
No, no, for the Maverick Center Fitness Center.
Oh, right, yeah. The other enterprise.
Enterprise funds, that's what I was looking for. Those do add a significant amount. They are part of the operation of the city, but not part of the standard budget. And even at that, you know, that goes up to what.
It's around a hundred and twenty million.
Is it that much now? Yeah. They keep a close watch on that. We look at the budget and we get a quarterly report on it as to what is happening. But truthfully, most of the budget just kind of operates itself and moves forward. So with that information, is there anything else the council wants to bring up on that? If not, that's the introduction to it. So to the council fraction.
I move for approval of Resolution nineteen dash forty-three, the tentative budget.
Second. Properly before us. Any further comments? Just a note, for the public to weigh in on this budget, this will now put it out there. People have a chance to review it and the public hearing on August thirteenth will allow people to actually comment on that. Okay? So with that then, to our city recorder for the roll call vote.
Councilman Petis Manu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Buehler?
Aye.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Norbelt?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. This one now is SMI three dash nineteen filed by Daniel Stevens. This is requesting final plat approval for the two oh one Mountain View Park subdivision at sixty-three hundred West, twenty-five forty South. And since I didn't review this right before council meeting, I'm remembering from last week, let's see.
Stop the parking out on Raceway.
No, yeah, it was, how many parcels was involved in that? Boy, I'm just. And in case you're wondering, yeah, I spent the whole weekend sick, so I didn't study or prepare very well, so. Oh, that's right. Divided up into four different parcels. Scroll down to that. Ah, there it is. So I'm not at my best, but I came anyway. I am not contagious, so that was that. Anyway, so that is the issue before us for that is to go ahead and approve this final plat approval. This is one of those where we have to officially do it. I believe most of it is a done deal. We have, we have had some legal reasons not to. So with that, let's see, there it is. Four lots ranging from five to twenty-two acres and sold manufacturing. We call it a subdivision, of course, but it is manufacturing. With that then to the council.
I move for approval of SMI dash three dash two thousand and eighteen.
Second. Properly before us. Any further comments or information? Seeing none, to our city recorder.
Councilman Norbelt?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Petis Manu?
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, next, on our consent agenda, we have one item, Resolution nineteen dash forty-four, authorizing the city to enter into an easement purchase agreement, the perpetual easement, and a temporary construction easement with some individuals on Leemower Street. This is one of a continuing string of minor project requests on the twenty-seven hundred West project. And these are pretty standard items, so, and we've approved a bunch of them, and there's the latest one. We should begin pretty close to the end. I see they're digging up twenty-seven hundred West now to do some work. Have to stop driving on there, they always down to two lanes, so. With that introduction then to the council.
I move for approval of Resolution nineteen dash forty-four.
Properly before us. Seeing no further discussion, to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Petis Manu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Buehler?
Aye.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Norbelt?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. That completes our business. We do not have any proposed session. So the portion of our business tonight, which was our regular council meeting, is now at an end. We do have three more meetings, brief ones, for other items that the council has business to take care of, but not as a city council. And so we'll immediately go to those, but for now, a motion for this one to end. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those votes say no, it passes unanimously. The regular city council meeting is adjourned. Thank you to all of you who came and gave us your comments and feedback, especially and to anyone listening in. That.
With that, I call to order the special meeting of the West Valley City RDA, Redevelopment Agency, and note that we've had an opening ceremony and roll call with all members present. First item of business is approval of minutes from April twenty-third, two thousand and nineteen, which I believe was when the only thing that we discussed was the acquisition of the Hanson property, so the West of West.
Mr. Chairman, move for approval of the April twenty-third, two thousand and nineteen special meeting minutes.
Second.
All in favor of approving?
Say aye.
Aye. Minutes are approved. Next, we have the report of our chief executive officer.
No report, sir. Thanks. Thank you. First item of business in terms of resolutions, Resolution nineteen dash zero four is up for discussion or a motion, which is the adoption of a tentative budget as well as setting of the date for public hearing on June fourth, two thousand and nineteen. The floor is open for any discussion and motion on that.
Move for approval of Resolution nineteen dash zero four, the tentative budget.
Second.
Motion and second are acknowledged. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose to abstain? Resolution nineteen dash zero four.
Point of order, did we need a roll call vote on that?
That's right, sorry. I was having too much fun. I'll turn it over to the recorder for a vote.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Buehler?
Aye.
Mr. Hume?
Aye.
Mr. Bigelow?
Aye.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Norbelt?
Yes.
And Chairman Petis Manu?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Mr. Chair? I just want to thank you so that I wasn't the only one that always made mistakes. At least you've made one, so I'm not totally alone.
I make a lot of mistakes, sir.
First one.
Next resolution we have on here is nineteen dash nineteen dash zero five, which is a resolution to approve a marketing agreement between the redevelopment agency and Utah Software LLC. The other two are similar, but the terms are different, so we do need to go through one at a time, correct? With that, is there any additional information needed or any more introduction to that item? Then we'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, move for approval of Resolution nineteen dash zero five.
Second.
Properly before us, then we'll turn to the recorder for a vote.
Mr. Norbelt?
Yes.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Bigelow?
Aye.
Mr. Hume?
Aye.
Mr. Buehler?
Aye.
Ms. Lang?
And Chairman Petis Manu?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. The next motion is nineteen dash zero six, which is a marketing agreement between the redevelopment agency and Utah Royals Football Club LLC. Is there any additional information or introduction needed to this item? Then we'll entertain a motion. I move for approval of Resolution nineteen dash zero six. Properly before us, and we'll turn to the airport for a vote.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Buehler?
Aye.
Mr. Hume?
Aye.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Norbelt?
Yes.
And Chairman Petis Manu?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And final resolution for this special meeting is nineteen dash zero seven, which is the approval of a marketing agreement between the agency and Real Monarch LLC. Is there any discussion or further introduction needed on this item? Okay, we'll entertain a motion.
I move for approval of nineteen dash zero seven.
Second.
Properly before us, and we'll turn to the recorder for a vote.
Mr. Norbelt?
Yes.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Bigelow?
Aye.
Mr. Hume?
Aye.
Mr. Buehler?
Aye.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
And Chairman Petis Manu?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. With that, we have covered all of our items of business and all open for a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I need to borrow some real thread from my meeting. Thank you. I've been trying, it's not working. So I call to order the special meeting of the housing authority. Note that we've had an opening ceremony and a roll call and all is present. We have the approval for the minutes of January eighth, two thousand and nineteen.
Move for approval of the minutes of January eighth, and just one point of order the last two times. These are our regular monthly meetings, not special meetings, so.
Thank you for the correction.
She would have. We'll have to see what the minutes reflect.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Got a report from the executive director?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you. Our only resolution is nineteen dash zero one, which is to adopt a tentative budget, which our public hearing will be set for June fourth, two thousand and nineteen. Do we need discussion or a motion?
Mr. Chairman, move for approval of Resolution nineteen dash zero one.
Second.
Thank you. And ask for the recorder for a. Thank you, and ask for the recorder for a vote. Mr. Petis Manu?
Aye.
Mr. Bueller?
Aye.
Mr. Hume?
Aye.
Mr. Bigelow?
Aye.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Norfelt?
Yes.
And Chairman Lang?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. We have one motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
I think you are adjourned.
Call to order municipal building authority tonight and opening ceremony by State Builder, a council member. Thank you for realized video clip reflected well for tonight. Appreciate it very much. Roll call, is everyone is here? Every council member is here tonight, and we have approval of minute April 16th, 2019. So, I need a motion and a second.
So, move.
Second.
Thank you. So, all favor in this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. The chief executive officer, is anything you want to say something tonight? Or no?
No, sir, thank you.
Okay. We have a resolution as 19-3. I will turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, sir. Yes, so this is a tentative budget approval as the other ones were done at the other meetings, specifically the housing authority and the redevelopment agency. Difference between those three and the general fund tentative budget adoption mostly has to do with date, which was also pointed out in the other meetings. So, these three budgets will be adopted for the, in their final form on June 4th, whereas the general fund one won't be until August. That's just a point for the public. The other point that might be of interest for this particular budget, being the building authority, is unlike the one that the mayor provided some detail on in terms of the regular general fund and operating budget, this one swings wildly. For example, in 2015, 16, total revenues into the, and expenditures out were $309,000, whereas the next year, the budget was $87 million. Now, you may wonder why we would see such wide swings and volatility. It's because the building authority fund is used specifically and only for handling bond funds, construction funds, refunding transactions in which debt that's associated with various building projects is undertaken. This year, the total is $2.8 million, and it's really just starting to reflect some expenditures from our building program that we've undertaken in the last couple of years.
Appreciate it very much. I will turn this over to the council.
Mr. Chairman, move for approval of Resolution 19-03.
Second.
So, we have a motion, and we have a second. Well, we'll turn over to the city recorder.
Mr. Petis Manu?
Aye.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Aye.
Mr. Bigelow?
Aye.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Norfelt?
Yes.
And Chairman Hume?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, and one more motion. Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And we adjourn.